Manager Leon.
Leon is here.
The manager Leon is present, City Attorney Denherter.
Denherter is here.
Verify Fertig. Fertig is absent.
Thank you, Al. All right, Commissioners, you have before you the minutes of the special city commission meeting of May 1st, as well as the work session meeting and the regular meeting of April 27th. What is your pleasure?
Move to approve.
Second, Sarda's second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any commission discussion about the minutes? Al, roll call please.
Schramm.
Aye.
Schramm, aye. Weber.
Weber, aye.
Weber is aye, Benson.
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye, Sarda.
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye, Hoffner.
Hoffner, aye.
Hoffner is aye, Minor.
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye, Moser.
Moser, aye.
Moser is aye, Mayor Johnson.
Johnson votes aye.
Johnson is aye, motion passes eight zero.
You have before you the schedule of bills, what is your pleasure?
Moser, I'll move we pay the bills.
Benson, second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any commission discussion about the bills? Dave, any phone calls about our bills? Steve out there this evening?
I am, no phone calls.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Colleen, any emails?
No emails at this time.
Brad, any YouTube comments?
This is Dave again filling in for Brad, no YouTube comments.
All right, double duty tonight, Dave, congratulations. All right, uh, Al, can you do roll call please?
Hey, we're doing roll call on scheduled bills, Weber.
Weber, aye.
Weber is aye, Benson.
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye, Sarda.
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye, Hoffner.
Hoffner, aye.
Hoffner is aye, Minor.
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye, Moser.
Moser, aye.
Moser is aye, Schramm.
Schramm, aye.
Schramm is aye, Mayor Johnson.
Johnson, aye.
Johnson is aye, motion passes eight zero.
City managers report.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the commission, our mission is to provide exemplary experiences, services and spaces that create opportunities for everyone to learn, engage and thrive. So, uh, as we work through a number of things this evening, uh, we want to keep that in the back of our mind and at the forefront as well, uh, so we can do a great job for our community. Um, couple of announcements here, uh, number one, uh, we've kind of had a little bit of hard, hard week at the city. Uh, John Economy, who's a member of our planning commission, recently passed away. So our certainly our thoughts and prayers are with he, uh, his family as well as Toots Marchand. Toots worked in our finance department for many years and anyone who knows Toots knew they broke the mold with Toots Marchand. So, uh, certainly, um, prayers and, and thoughts with her as well. I'd also like to personally thank, uh, all the commissioners and staff for the condolences and, uh, kind wishes that you've extended to me and my family, uh, with the passing of my mother recently. So, thank you very much, uh, for your understanding and sympathies. Uh, this week on a happy note is National Police Week, so we're celebrating and honor honoring our police officers, especially during this time, our first responders of all kind have had challenges and we want to certainly honor our local police department. Um, on May 16th, we have something interesting happen, happening. Um, I'm going to look here over to my email, but we have the 114th fighter wing flying over healthcare facilities at nine eastern South Dakota communities. So really what this is doing is commemorating, uh, all healthcare workers, first responders, who are policing are included in that, and other personnel working on the front lines of the COVID-19 pandemic. Kind of a neat thing, so if you look to the sky on the 16th, somewhere between, they say Yankton is 2:30 to 2:40 PM, you may see that aircraft fly over. When I look at the times and I see Mitchell 2:20 to 2:30 and then I see Vermillion after us, 2:35, I just wonder how fast that plane goes, Jake probably has some idea like that, but I don't think I could handle that. I could hardly handle the, the cub that I was in. But that'll be a neat thing to look for and to listen for and give us all, uh, some thought as we are thinking about still the situation we're all facing with COVID-19. I want to remind everybody that our local election is June 2nd and we want everyone to vote. Uh, you can vote remotely by a mail-in ballot, so if you have not gone through that process yet, there's still time. We certainly, uh, can, you can certainly can vote in person on the second. However, we encourage you, as does the county, to use that mail-in option, um, this year for the local election. Our next meeting is May 26th, that is not a Monday, that is a Tuesday because of Memorial Day, which falls on Monday, of course. We do have a work session, you'll see that on your consent items, I have not set a work session, um, item yet. We have plenty to talk about with, uh, COVID-19, certainly there'll be new things to talk about there. Uh, we also have budget that's really creeping up on our heels and certainly between one of those two topics or combination thereof, we'll have plenty to talk about. I do also want to mention, if people didn't catch it in the press, that we were awarded, uh, over a $6 million, I think it was $6.4 million grant for, uh, from the EDA for our wastewater, uh, facility repairs. That's an awesome, amazing opportunity for us, uh, really want to thank the staff, Kyle Goodmanson and, uh, his staff as well as the finance office and Colleen who helped out, uh, with that application, but also District Three, planning District Three does not get enough accolades. Without planning District Three, our community would visibly look a lot different and infrastructure-wise function much differently. They have been just champions of all of our local governments and so Greg Henderson and his team really deserve a lot of thanks for that as well. Uh, that's all I have to report unless there's questions for me from the commission before you get to your business.
All right, hearing nothing from the commission, we'll move on to public appearances. And this is the time when people can address the city commission about items not on tonight's agenda. So I will go to Dave and ask if there's anyone via the phones or YouTube who would like to address something not on tonight's agenda.
There are no phone calls on YouTube Live, we have one lady commenting Sylvia Allen states condolences to you, Amy Leon.
Thank you for that. Uh, Colleen, any emails?
No emails at this time.
All right, thank you. We'll go on to our consent item agenda. Number one is setting a date of May 26, 2020 at 6:00 PM, uh, for the next work session. And as Amy said, the topic is to be determined. Number two is consideration memorandum 20-89 recommending approval of the application from Martha's Crafts for a transient merchant license from May 22nd to June 21st, 2020. Number three is consideration memorandum 20-90 recommending approval of the application from Martha's Crafts for a transient merchant license for August 20th through September 20th of 2020. Number four is establishing May 26, 2020 as the date for the public hearing on the request for a special events off sale package wine and malt beverage dealer's license for July 18th at the Yankton Area Arts Building and their associated parking lot. And that is located at 508 Douglas. It will also extend into the Sacred Heart Church parking lot next door. And that will be for a picnic dinner and drink pickup. And I'll have Julie Amesbury, the executive director of Yankton Arts, give us an update on that in just a moment. But first I will read number five, the final item under the consent agenda. And that is establishing May 26, 2020 is the date for the public hearing on the applications for renewal of malt beverage licenses for the 20 through 21 licensing period. So first, commission, are there any questions about any of these items? And then, uh, Julie Amesbury wanted to address us about her item. Any questions from the commission? All right, then we'll turn it over to Julie, welcome.
Thank you, thanks, um, I just wanted to just give an update to the commission about Yankton Area Arts. We have a, an annual fundraiser called Meridian on Blanc that we usually hold on the bridge, but because of COVID-19, we have decided that we're going to do a virtual event. So we'll still have a picnic, um, folks will be able to pick up food and drink and then take to a park or their homes. Um, and then we're looking at a private virtual concert, a link to a private concert that they can enjoy. So we're really looking for ways to, um, accommodate during this uncertain time. And so I just wanted to let you know that, that we are being proactive in this time and we really want to keep our patrons and our volunteers safe.
Julie, thanks for that update, it sounds like a great example of our, um, citizens being proactive and creative in the way that they're, uh, now living with COVID-19. Um, and we really hope you have a successful event. Does the commission have any questions or comments for Julie?
Sorry, I can't, I can't resist, do we have to wear white?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
I'm sorry, this is Commissioner Minor, do we still have to wear white? How will you know?
You, you don't have to wear white, I think you can wear whatever you want.
All right, anything else, thank you Commissioner Minor. Julie, thanks for joining us, uh, Dave, is there any, any comments via the phone or YouTube on any of these items?
No comments via phone or YouTube.
All right, Colleen, any emails?
No emails at this time.
Thank you, with that, let's go to Al for roll call.
Uh, first we're going to need a motion and second, and we have to do this individually. I think we can skip number one, the work session, because we're really just setting a date there. So we'll start with a motion and second on number two, the transient merchant license for Martha's Crafts from May 22nd to June 21st.
Weber moves.
Sarda's second.
We have a motion and a second and thank you, Al, for the course correction. If there's no further discussion, uh, let's just do roll call, Al.
Benson.
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye, Sarda.
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye, Hoffner.
Hoffner, aye.
Hoffner is aye, Minor.
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye, Moser.
Moser, aye.
Moser is aye, Schramm.
Schramm, aye.
Schramm is aye, Weber.
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye, Mayor Johnson.
Johnson is aye.
Johnson is aye, consent item number two passes eight zero.
And number three, the transient merchant license, do we have a motion for that?
So move, Moser.
Benson, second.
We have a motion and a second. Al, let's do roll call.
Okay, we're voting on number three on the consent item, transient merchant license for Martha's Crafts from August 20th to September 20th. And we'll start with Sarda.
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye, Hoffner.
Hoffner, aye.
Hoffner is aye, Minor.
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye, Moser.
Moser, aye.
Moser, aye, Schramm.
Schramm, aye.
Schramm is aye, Weber.
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye, Benson.
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye, Mayor Johnson.
Johnson is aye.
Johnson is aye, consent item number three passes eight zero.
All right, number four under the consent agenda was the establishing a public hearing for the Yankton Area Arts event, can we get a motion for that?
Benson, so moved.
Weber's second.
Got a motion and a second, Al, roll call please.
Okay, and we're voting on consent item number four, establishing the May 26th as the date for public hearing on a special request for special events, uh, package malt, package wine and malt beverage dealers license for Yankton Area Arts. And we'll begin with Hoffner.
Hoffner, aye.
Hoffner is aye, Minor.
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye, Moser.
Moser, aye.
Moser is aye, Schramm.
Schramm, aye.
Schramm is aye, Weber.
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye, Benson.
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye, Sarda.
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye, Mayor Johnson.
Johnson is aye.
Johnson is aye, consent item number four passes eight zero.
All right, and finally, number five under the consent agenda is establishing May 26th as the renewal date, our public hearing for the renewals of malt beverage licenses, can we get a motion?
Benson, so moved.
Schramm, second.
We've got a motion and a second, Al, roll call please.
Hey, and this is item number five on consent items and it's establishing the 26th as the date for the renewal of the application for malt beverage licenses for the 2021 licensing period. Minor.
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye, Moser.
Moser, aye.
Moser is aye, Schramm.
Schramm, aye.
Schramm is aye, Weber.
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye, Benson.
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye, Sarda.
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye, Hoffner.
Hoffner, aye.
Hoffner is aye, Mayor Johnson.
Johnson is aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye, consent item number five passes eight zero.
All right, we have no old business tonight, so we'll move on to new business. And that's consideration memorandum 20-91 regarding resolution 20-31, which is a conditional use permit for a single-family home in a B2 highway business district on the north 60 feet of a lot at 906 Dakota Street. And before I ask for motion, Dave, I should probably ask you if the planning commission recommended that we proceed with this.
Yes, both the staff and the planning commission recommended approval of the proposed conditional use permit.
All right. Can we get a motion for this item?
Move to approve the conditional use permit.
Weber's second.
We have a motion and a second, commission, any further discussion on this item? Dave, any comments via the phone or YouTube?
No comments via phone or YouTube on this item.
Colleen, any comments via email?
No emails on this item.
All right, Al, roll call please.
Hey, and we're voting on item new business number one, it says, uh, conditional use permit. We'll start with Moser.
Moser, aye.
Moser is aye, Schramm.
Schramm, aye.
Schramm is aye, Weber.
Weber's aye.
Weber's aye, Benson.
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye, Sarda.
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye, Hoffner.
Hoffner, aye.
Hoffner is aye, Minor.
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye, Mayor Johnson.
Johnson is aye.
Johnson is aye, new business item number four dash one passes eight zero.
Number two under new business is consideration memorandum, memorandum 20-92 regarding resolution 20-32, a plat of the 1400 block of West Street, Stephen and Lori Drotzman are the owners. And again, the planning commission considered that this evening, Dave, did they recommend we approve it?
They recommended approval of both the plat and associated developer's agreement.
All right. Can we get a motion?
Uh, Moser will move the memorandum.
Weber's second.
Have a motion and a second, is there any further commission discussion on this item? Dave, any input from the public via telephone or YouTube?
There is no phone or YouTube Live comments from the public.
Colleen, any emails from the public?
No emails at this time regarding this item.
Thank you, Al, roll call please.
Hey, and this is roll call on new business item number two, which is a plat review for the Drotsmans. We'll start with Schramm.
Schramm, aye.
Schramm is aye, Weber.
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye, Benson.
Benson's aye.
Benson is aye, Sarda.
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye, Hoffner.
Hoffner, aye.
Hoffner is aye, Minor.
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye, Moser.
Moser, aye.
Moser is aye, Mayor Johnson.
Johnson is aye.
Johnson is aye, new business item four dash two, yes, four dash two passes eight zero.
Number three under new business is consideration of memorandum 20-93 regarding resolution 20-33, which is a plat of 306, 308 and 310 Tulip Lane and 303 and 305 Lilac Lane. And, uh, White Crane Estates LLC is the owner. Dave, did the planning commission recommend approval of this tonight?
Yes, the planning commission recommended approval of both this plat and the next agenda item from the same subdivision.
Thank you very much, can we get a motion?
Minor, so moved.
Sarda's second.
We've got a motion and a second, any commission discussion on this item? Dave, any input from, uh, via phone or YouTube on this subject from the public?
No comments about this item from either source.
And Colleen, any public input via email?
No emails on this item.
Thank you, Al, roll call please.
Okay, and this is roll call on new business item four dash three, which is a plat review for White Crane Estates. And we'll begin with Weber.
Weber, aye.
Weber is aye, Benson.
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye, Sarda.
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye, Hoffner.
Hoffner, aye.
Hoffner is aye, Minor.
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye, Moser.
Moser, aye.
Moser is aye, Schramm.
Schramm, aye.
Schramm is aye, Mayor Johnson.
Johnson is aye.
Johnson is aye, new business item four dash three passes eight zero.
Number four under new business is consideration of memorandum 20-94 and resolution, regarding resolution 20-34, a plat of 301 and 303 Tulip Lane and again, White Crane Estates LLC is the owner. As Dave Mingo pointed out earlier, the planning commission approved or recommended approval of this earlier this evening. Can we get a motion?
Moser make the motion.
Schramm, second.
We've got a motion and a second, any commission discussion on this item? Dave, any public input via telephone or YouTube?
No comments on this item.
Colleen, any public input via email?
No comments at this time.
Al, roll call please.
Hey, and this is roll call on item number four dash four, which is a plat review again for White Crane Estates. We'll begin with Benson.
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye, Sarda.
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye, Hoffner.
Hoffner, aye.
Hoffner is aye, Minor.
Minor's aye.
Minor is aye, Moser.
Moser, aye.
Moser is aye, Schramm.
Schramm, aye.
Schramm is aye, Weber.
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye, Mayor Johnson.
Johnson is aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye, new business item four dash four passes eight zero.
Number five under new business is consideration of memorandum 20-95 authorizing the sublease of Chan Gurnee Airport Tea Hangar Unit Number Two, what is your pleasure?
Move to approve, Sarda.
Weber's second.
We have a motion and a second, any commission discussion on this item? Dave, any public input via telephone or YouTube?
There is no input regarding this item via YouTube or telephone.
And Colleen, any public input via email?
Uh, no, uh, email questions at this time.
Thank you very much, Al, roll call please.
Hey, and now we're voting on new business item number four dash five, which is a sublease of a tea hangar at Chan Gurnee Airport. We'll begin with Sarda.
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye, Hoffner.
Hoffner, aye.
Hoffner is aye, Minor.
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye, Moser.
Moser, aye.
Moser is aye, Schramm.
Schramm, aye.
Schramm is aye, Weber.
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye, Benson.
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye, Mayor Johnson.
Johnson is aye.
Johnson is aye, new business item four dash five passes eight zero.
Number six under new business is consideration of memorandum 20-97 regarding resolution 20-35, the transfer of city-owned property for economic development purposes to Yankton Area Progressive Growth. This property is located at 310 Pearl Street, what is your pleasure?
Move approval, Sarda.
Second, Schramm.
We have a motion and a second, Amy, can you inform the public about what this arrangement is?
I sure can, but I know Dave Mingo will do a much better job because he's been working both with the county and YAPG and been our liaison, so I'll bounce that off to Dave Mingo.
Yeah, the proposal, uh, ends up being a, a win, 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 so a win on many levels. We have a, a delinquent, uh, piece of property that's gone through a condemnation process. Uh, financially is upside down, uh, the level of encumbrances against the property. Um, and that doesn't even include the, um, the house that still needs to be torn down. Uh, that value is far in excess of what the, the land itself is worth. So, um, with public-private partnerships and with the help of Yankton County, um, and there'll be a request to the school district also, uh, we can resolve a situation where we have, taxes and liens building up on the property which will never be paid. Um, so, so it's, uh, accounts receivable that'll never be, never be received. Um, and, and flip a property and get it in the hands of the private sector and, uh, create an opportunity for development and the creation of a much-needed housing unit. Uh, this is one of three that I discussed with, uh, Yankton County, uh, last week and they approved the transfer of all three properties, which will happen incrementally to the city. And hopefully in the future, we can have the same transfer discussion on the other two properties. But in this instance, uh, getting it into YAPG's hands as soon as possible will allow, uh, that private sector part of the partnership to work out and get that property cleaned up and redeveloped.
Dave, thank you for all your work in helping to bring that together amongst all the partners. Commission, any questions, discussion? Dave, have you received any public input via telephone or YouTube on this item?
We have not received any input via telephone or YouTube on this item.
And Colleen, any public input via email?
No emails on this item.
All right, Al, roll call.
Hey, and this is roll call on new item, her new business item four dash six, which is a transfer of city property to YAPG. And we'll begin with Hoffner.
Hoffner, aye.
Hoffner is aye, Minor.
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye, Moser.
Moser, aye.
Moser is aye, Schramm.
Schramm, aye.
Schramm is aye, Weber.
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye, Benson.
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye, Sarda.
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye, Mayor Johnson.
Johnson is aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye, new business item four dash six passes eight zero.
Number seven under new business is consideration of memorandum 20-96 regarding change order number two for the Huther Family Aquatic Center. This would increase the contract amount by $33,698. What is your pleasure?
Minor moves memorandum?
We have a motion and a second. Amy or Adam, can you talk about what this addition to the contract would entail for the public's benefit, please?
So as we began construction, uh, of course, we found some things as we typically do on big projects that we didn't know about. So crews began working on the project, um, and found some things, uh, that they didn't expect in the subsurface soils, including that required additional excavation depth, uh, backfill material, and some adjustments in piping. And so that's what this, uh, change order is for. There had to be some design modifications to the ventilation system on the mechanical building, uh, which is necessary to provide that adequate ventilation, ventilation there and, uh, to the door hardware to meet code and some other small details there. Um, so, uh, there is a, a listing there in the packet of all the various details of each item and their cost. Uh, the largest really being, um, the design modification and the additional extension of the, uh, mechanical building. So it is a, a big amount of money, thirty-three thousand dollars is not small change, but in that size of a project, it's pretty, a pretty small change order. So if there's any other questions, uh, we can certainly do our best to field them.
Commissioners, any more discussion on this item?
Um, I have one. This is Commissioner Mosher. Uh, just more out of curiosity, how is that project coming along? I'm certainly impressed as I drive by there. Am I impressed because, um, we're on time or ahead of schedule per se?
Well, I think you're impressed. I'll tell you why you're, I think you're impressed because construction is going well and there has been good weather, but also, uh, it's starting to shape up and you can really see where things are going to be. Um, so I think that has something to do with it as well. Also, you know, we had to do some street work and because people aren't moving around as much right now, they're, they are able to work without that interruption, so, uh, it is going very well. We're really fortunate too that we had, uh, these, uh, this low bid because we do have some play. Most construction projects of this size do have a number of change orders, and we're able to do some things and bring you some things as we have and as we continue, as we continue on with the project for you to consider. But we can also address situations like this as they came up. So, um, downside, uh, lots of downsides to the COVID-19 pandemic. Uh, one upside is construction has the ability of work and they have the ability, and lots of people are, are looking for work, and so they're able to, you know, hire on, I think, probably generally, um, better or more easily than there, it would be otherwise. So that project is going, um, smoothly, and our other construction projects are going smoothly as well. So it's, uh, so far, here at least for construction.
Did I see that, uh, we're getting some drone footage of the progress of that project? If people are interested in taking a look, the City of Yankton's website?
Yes, and maybe, um, if Dwayne is close to his mic, he'll want to talk a little bit about that because he doesn't let me fly that drone, um, because he's seen me drive a car. Dwayne, are you available to tell the commission a little bit about what, what we're using our drone footage for?
Thank you for that update, Dwayne. Appreciate your work on that too. Any more commission discussion on this item? Dave, any public input via telephone or YouTube?
We have no input via telephone or YouTube.
And Colleen, any public input via email?
No emails on this item at this time.
Thank you. Al, roll call please.
Okay, and this is roll call on new business item four dash seven, which is the change order number two to the Huther Family Aquatic Center. We begin with Minor.
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Mosher?
Mosher, aye.
Mosher is aye. Shram?
Shram, aye.
Shram is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Sarda?
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye. Hoffner?
Hoffner, aye.
Hoffner is aye. And Mayor Johnson?
Johnson is aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. New business item four dash seven passes eight zero.
All right, and for our final item under new business, we want to have a discussion about the city facility reopening plans, and I'm going to turn it over to the city manager to get that started.
Thanks, Mayor. No action for you to take this evening. The department heads and I are currently working on, uh, facilities plans, uh, for phased reopening of our city facilities. We've had some questions from the public about when is the library going to be open again? When is the Summit Activity Center going to be open? And there have been some announcements made, but, uh, what I'd like to do tonight is just talk to you a little bit about general philosophy and where we're headed. I don't want to get into all the minutia, uh, of each facility. Um, when you think about the breadth of all the different services we cover, we have a lot of different buildings and a lot of different operations, and a lot of them really, um, operate in, in a different, in a different way. So we, I don't want to talk about them all tonight unless you're interested in doing that. I think where we want to focus our attention tonight is some of the facilities that are public interacts with the most. Uh, for example, the Summit Activity Center, the library, City Hall. So they kind of get a general understanding of, uh, where we are in terms of our facilities. Uh, what we did is we developed a number of different phases, and, uh, we have actually four phases. Uh, phase zero is what we're in now, and that's really our planning and implementation stage. Uh, we believe we've been really in that stage since March and will probably stay there at least until May eighteenth. As we continue on with the phases, uh, we have different levels, so to speak. So phase one would be opening with substantial restrictions. Um, and we came up with some triggers for each of those phases. So under phase one, it's, uh, active cases, uh, fifty or more in our county with an upward trend in COVID active cases or doubling rate lower than five. Uh, facility risk factors, and the reason why we say that is, you know, uh, maybe we have someone who we know through contact tracing or we know because they've informed us, um, has been in our facility who tests positive. So that's what we say when we mean a facility risk factor. Um, adequate staffing, do we have the right staffing for, um, a phase one type opening? Also, uh, PPE, do we have the right personal protective equipment for our facilities? And one of our facilities might be implemented by the amount of PPE we have in another facility. So, you know, certainly if our first responders don't have the right PPP, PP, PPE, we won't be opening, uh, maybe something that's less of an essential service. Phase two would be an opening with minimal restrictions, so active cases, um, less than fifty in the county, downward or flattening trend in, in cases, uh, active cases doubling at a rate of five or higher, uh, facility risk factors again, and then staffing. So, um, that would be a little bit of a more broader opening. Uh, phase three would be opening with a minimal restriction. Active cases less than twenty in the county, downward or flattening trend in COVID-19 active cases, uh, facility risk factors again, staffing and, and PPE. And we'll certainly, when we have this all, uh, put together in a document, we'll certainly share, uh, the executive summary with the public so they can understand what our different phases are. Um, I do want to be clear too that just because our library is operating at a phase one with substantial restrictions doesn't necessarily mean City Hall would be at the same level. Our facilities are so different and different things could happen. Uh, we're going to have to do a great job communicating with the public as to where we are, and we don't expect people to memorize phases or memorize what those phases mean for everybody, for each facility. But our expectation will be, uh, that people work with us and as we educate them and as we work with them. So I have the library just in front of me, so I'm just want to go through the library as an example because, uh, it's a little less complex than some of the other facility plans, and I think it's an easy one to talk about. So in a phase one, uh, at the library, a phase one opening, for example, our doors would be closed to the public. Uh, staff would be assisting people by phone and email, Facebook. There'd be a curb side, no contact type pickup available. We'd be doing the virtual storytimes, uh, and programming via Facebook, planning virtual, virtual programming for summers, summer reading programs and, and winter programs for, for children, and then preparing and rearranging the facility to reopen more to the public. Phase two would be that we would have open doors to the public, uh, with limited patronage. Uh, and they'd be open between one and five. That would provide us an opportunity, uh, for cleanliness and doing some sanitation. That would be for general public. Uh, and then we'd have some high-risk appointment hours available, for example. Um, it, that would be from eight-thirty to twelve. So if you're in a high risk, either you have compromised immunity or you're, um, elderly or you have some other reason that you would fall into that population, uh, you could call and make an appointment at the library. Uh, library open hours would be, uh, then eight AM Monday, eight to five, uh, Monday through Friday. We wouldn't have physical programs, no meeting room outside, um, for outside groups. We'd still do the, all the electronic assistance, and we'd limit the computer usage, both in time and number of computer, computers available. We'd be doing extra sanitizing, sanitizing and cleanly, cleaning. Um, we ask, uh, all staff and public, we ask staff to wear face coverings and then we'd request the public to use a face covering well, as well. On a phase three opening, uh, we would change slightly that and offer high-risk appointments at a a shorter amount of time, eight AM to ten AM. We would have doors open to the public from ten AM until closing, depending upon CDC guidelines. Um, we do some more normal or regular summer hours, et cetera. Um, we would still have all the virtual opportunities as well. So just by means of example, that's kind of how we're structuring our plans for each of our facilities. One thing Todd told me at the Summit Activity Center, you know, one of his phases will allow twenty people to work out at a time. They'll put twenty sanitation bottles and twenty clean towels out in front. Uh, when those bottles are gone, um, folks know that, you know, there's no availability for working out until someone brings them back and users will be instructed to sanitize, et cetera. So, um, we're coming up and developing these types of plans for each of our facilities. Um, and we're going to be asking the public to, uh, help us as we move along and as we learn ourselves, interact in our facilities. One thing I think all the department heads can certainly say for sure is that we'll never be going back in any sense to where we were, um, you know, post-March. Uh, because now we have new information, and I think, uh, regardless of, of how we move ahead and how well we succeed with COVID-19, we're going to be thinking and doing things in a little bit different way. So I'm happy to answer questions about, um, about specific facilities, and we can do that, um, right now. I'd also like to have an additional discussion a little bit about events, both city events and general public events, and talk to you a little bit about what's going on in the realm of planning with events and activities. Um, so the feedback that I'm looking for is, are we on the right track with this type of phase planning? And do you like, or do you like, would you like to be different?
Well, Commissioner, first let's address the question of the facility reopening plans. Are, is there any more discussion about that?
Yeah.
Commissioner Sarda, I like what you put together. It sounds pretty thorough. And, um, if you have it somewhat summed up, I'd kind of like to read through it via email if you could at some point.
Yes, that's our plan, is to put together a summary, uh, for you commissioners and as well for the public so they have a general idea. You know, there are some items that we won't provide to the public, um, because they have to do with our police department and our dispatch. Um, that could borderline on some, you know, security information, but for the most part, we can summarize these things so people have a reasonable expectation. I asked the department heads to get me these things by Friday, and they were all so good. They did that. And, um, I have been out, so I am just looking at them this evening, um, and this afternoon. But I definitely want to get, um, get that out to you all to review and to understand, knowing that two things might change a little bit since there are things we don't know about, um, COVID-19 and are still learning. This plan, just like our, our plan when we were going the opposite way and starting to, mm, close things down, uh, we're learning as we're going, so there could be some flexibility there.
Commissioner Minor, uh, I think the phase reopening makes a lot of sense. That seems to be what many communities around the country are choosing to do as they begin to open. I appreciate that you guys are, uh, taking each facility case by case. That has to be an extraordinary amount of work, um, on the part of your department heads and city staff and you. Um, but that seems to be the most equitable way to proceed and the most logical. So thank you for that extra effort.
Any more feedback on those plans?
Yeah, um, I also would like to reiterate, I think it's a good plan. I think the, uh, caution is used wisely, and I like the fact that, as Commissioner Minor alluded to, that, that you take each one individual. I know the airport, you have some challenges because we lease buildings out to businesses that are trying to run a business through a city building, and that's kind of a, a challenge too when you want to conduct business. But I think, uh, emphasis should be placed on the amount of activity also, and I know that you take that into consideration. But as we go along, we'll know more, but I like the, um, the plan.
I have gotten a number of questions about our meetings. How long are we going to be conducting our meetings like this? And the governor's order, uh, that requires us to have a, that requires us, I guess, a break from having a physical, a physical place ends at the end of this month. So, you know, at beginning of next month, we do have to have a physical place. Uh, however, we may still be conducting our meetings this way, um, and just have, as we started out, that physical place in the R-Tech. My answer to that, um, when people ask me is when I feel it's safe to do so. When I feel it's comfortable again to put, you know, ten of you in the room and then possibly more public, then I'll make the recommendation that we switch that over. And now that we have some phases to consider, um, I think we can think about that for our meetings as well. I don't think we're there yet, um, and I think the fact that we have another couple of weeks here to get more data will be helpful. We do have somebody monitoring the data, uh, and the trending, you know. I know, I don't know if anybody's been on the South Dakota Department of Health website, but there's a statewide trend where they show all the cases, and then there's a line that either goes up or down through the, you know, that, that kind of math is called smoothing. And, and Dwayne is watching the cases for our county, and he's putting together, you know, that kind of graph so we could see over time, are we moving up or down as a county? I think that'll be helpful for us as we make these decisions to open. And we may end up going to a phase two at City Hall and stay at a phase two for a couple of months, and then decide we have to go back to a phase one because some numbers spike up. So this could be a long-range plan for us, or, or we maybe end up going to a, a, a this could be a long range plan for us or we or we maybe end up going to a a a phase three and things may seem pretty normal or back to closer to normal for a long time. And then in the winter, we may have to go all the way back, you know, to the beginning uh if we would have another spike. So this will be just part of a of a new uh normal, I guess. So people just should not be surprised uh when they see uh different operations over the course of the next few months. And be ready to work with us in a variety of different ways as we will be ready to work with uh other folks. Now, we do have an election coming up, so that adds a level of interesting, uh interest and interesting behavior here. So we're trying our best to promote people to vote uh by mail, but we know some folks will wanna show up on Election Day and we don't wanna discourage that. Uh, but we will limit access to the building. We can't limit access to voting, but people won't be free to walk around the entire City Hall, for example, like we would typically think of. We'll make sure that if you're not in the voting area, you're not hanging out in the building. Um, or, you know, stopping by uh just for a chat. So we'll make sure we're directing people in and probably going through a a a pattern, a walking pattern for voting, so people aren't crossing over much like we see in our large retail spaces. I wanted to talk a little bit about events because that's been uh lots of topic on topic for a lot of cities. Lots of discussions with other city managers and research across the country. Um, tomorrow, Casey Haberman and I and Todd Larson and Brittany LaCroy, if she's she's available, as well as uh Carmen, our good Carmen Schramm from the Chamber of Commerce, we're gonna start talking a little bit about our community philosophy on events. Um, and what we should be telling folks who are arranging events. And we have a lot of people who are asking us, should we hold our events or what are the rules on events? We don't have any gathering limitations right now in our ordinance, as you know. Uh, you do have that vehicle of an ordinance and I think next week or excuse me, next meeting, you'll probably have Ross put together another vehicle so that you can do that in the future throughout the summer if you want. But right now, we don't have anything. Uh, what we've been doing when we're getting requests about events is we're giving them the CDC guidelines and helping them talk through their event as much as possible. We're getting a lot of requests about baseball games and baseball activities and should should our group have baseball, should our group not have baseball? Um, we can give a personal recommendation, which I think um we are doing, giving a recommendation, but we we don't have a voice on behalf of the community. So part of our discussion uh uh tomorrow is going to be, what is our general philosophy here? And I'd I'd like to get your input to help share that about, you know, um, these events. Uh, I know Casey Haberman's in a tough position because we're trying to keep people away from each other, but yet she's in the business of promoting people to come together and come together from out of town. So she's in a unique position. Um, also, uh, the asking ourselves, what is an event? Um, you know, we think of the typical things like Rib Fest, Riverboat Days, all those types of things, but many of those events, um are not at are not too far off the same size of events of many private events. So events that maybe happen at a private business that are not arranged or organized with the city license uh do not require any city staffing. Uh, maybe it's a outdoor wedding or or a wedding at an event center. Um, all those types of things to consider. Uh, Rib Fest is around the corner. Uh, Rib Fest, I I'm recommending that Rib Fest utilize the CDC guideline for events as much as they can. We know that Rib Fest also partners with our our um drinking establishments. So how does that interface in terms of being socially distance out outside, but then maybe just a couple of feet away indoors, you have a lot of people in a small area. We don't have restrictions on that. So we talked about, we've talked about some things, you know, should we try to have events submit a plan to the health board or to the city to review? Should we have events get a approval uh for their event on how they're gonna operate? Some cities are taking it to that extent. Um, for us, I my recommendation would be it'd be very hard without anything in an ordinance to uh have them follow. Um, also very hard, I think, at this point to find out who um and what all the events are. We know about the big ones, but we don't really necessarily know about the private events. So that's another uh challenge for us as we talk about and and think about events in our community. Um, certainly they do bring a lot of stimulus to the economy. Um, but you have to decide, you know, is it, is it going to be the the best solution? Best idea? And we're making those choices right now for our city-run events. Um, part of that conversation uh tomorrow, we'll be discussing having a little bit of a forum, what I'd like to call a forum. I was involved uh with Commissioner Moser in her day job um on with partners with the World Archery Event, that tournament that Bruce Cole was is and was planning um thinking about. And so what happened there was uh Stephanie got all of the partners involved and we all talked a little bit about the nature of the event and just really had conversation. And Casey Haberman brought the idea of hey, after we meet as a as a team, let's let's consider holding uh sort of a forum conversation with known event organizers. So I'm thinking, you know, representatives from the Riverboat Days Committee, uh the Day House of the World, the uh, you know, founding thirds of the world, the folks that organize, known organize events, maybe some of the baseball association people. And let's start out with just a conversation about what are all the things to think about and all the logistics to think about and see where that goes. Um, talk about how how they, if they feel they can do their event safely or not. I think from there, we could probably glean a lot of information um and get an idea as to what folks are thinking. Um, managing the events, I think it's gonna be a pretty hard situation. Um, but you know, if that's something that the commission thinks we ought to try to do, uh then I would talk with the CDB and Chamber about their help and assistance with that. So um, on that note, I'd like to throw it out for you all to discuss and and give us ideas and and listen to what you're hearing in the community.
Uh, Hoffner here. Yeah, it's uh, it seems to me from what I hear and our Riverboat Days group has a meeting on Wednesday night to uh discuss it further, but it just seems like um our group is really kinda have that May thirty first to make another um, you know, look at it. Cause it, you know, that's quite a, we're probably the latest event. Um, one of the latest events at the towards the end of August. So we still have a time, I believe, but time is money. Obviously, you know, all this by planning this type type of large event, it's so good for the community and 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 it would be so fun to have that as a normal event. So we can um, you know, celebrate something. But again, we don't wanna take any chances and and the arts, of course, are a big part of our decision as well. So we'll meet with them uh Wednesday as well and discuss it further. As of now, we're we're not saying yea or nay. And I think um as we go along, we'll know more, but I'm I'm hoping that, you know, it can turn around, but obviously it has to start making better progress soon. Although it's a few months away, so we're we're positive, yet cautious.
I like, I'm sorry, Minor here. Thank you for having that conversation that's intersectional with um different representatives from the community and different event planners. The events are all different. Um, so they will have different considerations and um cautions. You know, I appreciate like Yankton Area Arts, it's hard to imagine that event that has been so personal and out on the bridge and um had a lot to do with the location. It's interesting to imagine that becoming virtual, but it's also a really creative option for them. Um, and I know it's a big fundraiser. So the fact that you and Casey and Brittany and Carmen and Todd are starting this conversation and interacting with um these groups that are planning, it it, I think that's essential. I think that has to happen. I I don't know what's happening around us. I have not heard of other festivals, large festivals that are occurring. But I think a lot of people are waiting till the end of May to make that call. Including.
Commissioner Meyer, I've talked to a few city managers about their, you know, their Riverboat Days, even though we're the only one that has that, you know. Other cities have their own days. Um, most of them have canceled, but most of them aren't late August either. Most of them are June events that have canceled. Um, and they're not the same size as ours either. You know, for community festivals, Riverboat Days is probably one of the biggest ones. Um, I think, and certainly on this side of the state, it is for weekend sort of long festival. So um, lots of questions there, a lots of other questions floating around about baseball and softball. Uh, many have said uh, okay, uh, you can practice on the field until this date and then after this date, when our restrictions come off. Um, it's up to you, follow CDC guidelines. Um, there's been a couple of cities, smaller cities who have asked their leagues and their different groups to show proof of insurance and additional, you know, liability in case there would be an outbreak among a team. Boy, I don't know that we wanna go there to get a handle on all that type of thing. At this point, I think it's pretty difficult. Um. You know, I think the best thing to do is unless we're going to have a limitation in our ordinance on gatherings or number of people. Um, the best thing to do is for those groups to monitor using their own uh judgment with the CDC guidelines that are the best practices. Um, and then maybe decide what's what's best for what's best for them. I do not believe there's any I'd have to ask Dr. Kendall, but I do not believe there's organized sports training going on in the summertime with groups, but that that would be another question that might help us get closer to a recommendation. One thing I think is important and Casey does as well is to have a community, you know, have us coming from the same page as we're talking to the community. So we're speaking kind of in one voice with what it is we recommend on how to how these folks should decide whether or not to conduct their event.
Amy, you and I have talked about this offline, but what are you hearing from like the State Department of Tourism? Do they have a consistent message at this time?
Yes, they're consistently inconsistent and I don't mean to say that to be rude. That, you know, they're they're in this situation where they know tourism is a huge, huge part of our state economy in the summer months. And but they also wanna balance the health and safety, both of our people and the people that come and visit. If people come to South Dakota to visit and they have a bad experience or or get involved in and uh in our in a a peak of numbers somewhere, that's not gonna make them, you know, have a warm feeling about coming back to South Dakota or experiencing South Dakota in the way that we want them to. So my my feeling is that it puts folks like Casey in a hard place because they're supposed to promote, but yet not over promote, or they're supposed to welcome but not promote. So our CBB has taken the approach, which I think is a good one of once people are here at the lake, at the campground, let's help them interact and let them know our rules for carryout and let them know what's open. Encourage hygiene. Uh, let's have them work with us once they're here as much as possible. But I'm certain that there isn't as much um external, you know, advertising and marketing going to draw in. I think by virtue of the fact that we are one of the few states that are in our in a close proximity that don't have many restrictions at all, we're getting a lot of visitation already. I think that will continue. So that's positive, but it's also negative, right? Because people are coming together. So I I I hate to say that the state's inconsistent, but I think they're they're being real careful to come up with a a clear message for communities. No, no different mayor than in the other regulations with businesses and things that we experienced and the whole commission experienced these past few weeks.
And Amy, I don't think you mentioned the Fourth of July, but we may have some members of the public wondering if we've made a decision on that. Do we have any updates there?
Well, no, because I love, uh, we all love the Fourth of July fireworks and we've already purchased the Fourth of July fireworks and we do that because we get a great deal on the fireworks. Can we do that safely? Probably not at Riverside Park. So we're looking at, you know, can we do it somewhere else in an alternative way? So hold it on the Fourth. Or should we do it maybe in conjunction with another later summer event that we all know and love that has fireworks, maybe? But we don't know the status of that event or, you know, maybe a fall football game or homecoming or some. Um, our vendor has said that he will work with us, which is really generous because, you know, Fourth of July is kind of the big dance and he probably would wanna go you know, somewhere else if he wasn't gonna work with us on the Fourth of July. But he he said he's but he's willing to work with us. Um, and I think we're kinda waiting now till the end of May to see where our numbers are going, whether or not that's might be a good idea or not. But we're gonna have to make the decision soon as to whether or not that's something that's a good choice for us. Um, you know, budgetarily, I've thought more about fireworks twenty twenty one than I have twenty twenty. Um, that might be something that we're not gonna choose to do. Maybe next year it's it's um appropriate to do safety wise, but it's maybe budgetarily, we won't wanna do it. But for this year, we we need to decide at what at where and and when we're going to celebrate that. So no, unfortunately, I don't have uh, I don't have an answer on that quite yet. If the commission wants to just vote that out right now and make a decision for us, that'd be easier than I could just say, well, the commission said.
It's so hard to be an event planner right now with all this uncertainty and there's the question, even if you plan an event, will people show up for it? And so I everyone that is in that business is just in a really tough spot. So I guess at least we're not alone, but the bad news is we're not alone. Commissioner, any more discussion on any of these topics? Pretty broad subject area. A lot of implications for the community.
This is Commissioner Schramm. I just uh to touch on the point Amy made uh about the visitors are coming to the campgrounds, cause I do think that's gonna be very busy this year. Uh, and talks with different people, it sounds like they might expect a record year actually for campers. Um, you know, I like what CBB is doing and trying to work with the campers that are already here and they're coming. Because if we can get people to spend money in town safely and responsibly, that's only gonna help the recovery from this projected loss that we're gonna have. So I do think Yankton's in a position where we might actually come out of this a little better than other locations because of the camping that's gonna be happening and the dollars spent in our community. So the bet, if we can encourage, if we can help facilitate that somehow in a safe, responsible manner, I would be all for that.
I appreciate that comment. Also, you know, Riverboat Days, if Riverboat Days is not held, we feel that economically at in the city budget, that makes a huge difference for our restaurants. That makes a huge Riverboat Days is a huge economic shot in the arm for us. By the same token, it goes back to those things. Is it the best choice and the safest choice? Are people going to attend? Can they get the vendors? Can we, can people stay apart from each other the way they need to? It's it's tough because, I mean, that's a, that's a huge thing for us and for our community, not to mention it's part of our identity. So it's not just about the money and just about the getting together and having fun. It's it's about who we are as a community and all those types of things as well. You know, um, the big social gatherings though are were the first things that were hmm, everyone was was told to put the brakes on. Those are the real tough things um to to do. And that's where you can really spread something really quickly. So that makes it a little bit cautious too. I know I have a personal opinion, but I wanna make a good uh, I wanna make good decisions for the community, not just solely based on my own opinions, but that's part of why I wanna talk to event planners themselves and people who run bars, run businesses. Um, and then Casey Haberman too, who who is works with groups that are um, you know, traveling and and do these types of things for a living and she's working with other state and regional people as well. So she has So she has information and ideas that I don't too, so.
I would just make this comment, sorry, this is Commissioner Minor. Uh, I just looked up CDC guidelines on community events yesterday morning. And I understand there may be some new guidelines coming at the end of the month, but they discourage any community event that will have more than 250 people present. Just so you know what it says.
Right, and, and that's great for, that's a really great piece of guidance for Minneapolis or, you know, Chicago. But for Yankton, a lot of our community events, I mean, Riverboat Days would, but a lot of them don't have more than 250. So, you know, do we need to scale that as well? I, I read that as well.
I guess one thing I would add to the discussion is, you know, if, if after these discussions take place, Amy and the commission, and, you know, is this something that you want the health board to discuss? And see if we have any recommendations that would be, uh, a vehicle to have more in-depth discussions around this too. But, you know, that I think we'd want the commission to say, yes, we want you to do that before we would go ahead and, and have that discussion as a health board.
So my intention, Mayor, was to invite the health board to that broader, larger discussion because I think it would help having the medical professional, as well as our, uh, and people that enforce code, um, part of that discussion with the event organizers. And, and at that point, if, if that, we have some, if the commission too would like us to, like you're saying, get together and make some specific recommendations from the health board. But I thought the health board should maybe be involved in those, that, that sort of con, community conversation as well.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Any more discussion? If not, we have.
Mayor Johnson, I have one question, um, and maybe it goes back to it. Sorry, this is Commissioner Moser. Um, Ross, if, if there are events in the city, um, is there any liability? I know Amy had brought up and it just got me thinking, um, as far as, you know, do we require events to show proof of insurance? Should there be an outbreak tied back to that event or something happening? Is, is there any culpability with the city?
No, there's not any liability associated with, as long as we're filed, we're sticking to our procedures. You know, the, the, when you're dealing with policy-based liability, as long as you're following your policy, you don't have to worry about, uh, you know, these, these outside issues. If we develop a policy and don't stick to it, then we've got problems.
Well, I guess I was thinking to Ross, um, you know, city manager Leon brought up, um, like baseball and softball. Some of those activities are happening in city parks. And so that's kind of what I was thinking about with that too. So if the organization's deciding to do it, even though it's in the city park, that's still on them.
Right, however, um, the, the actual structures that we have control over dugouts and things of that nature, um, we could, you know, subject that to our own opening protocols. Phase one, two, and three is we deem appropriate to allow access to those parts of the park. Uh, but I would kind of view it as if the park is open. I think, you know, the clubs need to be thinking responsibly about how they're going to use it. It's, it's on them at that point. Um, same, we left the, the recreational playground equipment open, uh, for instance. It's, um, requires responsible, responsible parenting, responsible club operations.
Yes, and we have some, we have, uh, Todd has put together some phased guidelines for our community events. Um, field rentals, uh, right now where, where we are is that in general, most organized activities in sports, basketball, baseball, soccer, softball, football, et cetera, that are held on parks, fields and open areas and courts are not recommended during times in which individuals are encouraged to require to practice social distancing. So for us, that would be in our phases one, two, and three. Um, these activities and sports typically require coaches and athletes who are not from the same household or living unit to be in close proximity in which increases their potential for exposure to COVID-19. So we're saying that we're, we're not recommending them. Can they play? You know, it's a public park, but we would tell them we're not recommending it in those three phases.
Any more discussion? All right, well, thank you everyone for that robust, um, conversation around these items. With that, we have exhausted tonight's agenda. So if there's nothing, yes.
Uh, public input on this?
Oh. Dave, have you received any public input via telephone or YouTube?
No comments via telephone, one comment via YouTube livestream TV from KP, Casey Haberman. A thumbs up, looking forward to the discussion tomorrow.
Some good feedback. Thanks, Casey. Colleen, any email input from the public?
No emails on this subject at this time.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Hoffner, for that reminder. With that, we have exhausted tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
A move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Al, roll call please.
Hey, we're voting for adjournment and we'll start with Moser.
Moser, aye.
Moser is aye. Schramm?
Schramm, aye.
Schramm is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Sarda?
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye. Hoffner?
Hoffner, aye.
Hoffner is aye. Minor?
Minor is aye.
Minor is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson is aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. The motion to adjourn passes eight zero.
Thank you, everyone. Take care.